And it looks like it's up all the way over there. Oh. It's pretty loud.
It's recording.
Okay. Okay. It's 7:30. I want to welcome everyone to the Village of Lansing Board Trustees Meeting for December 4th, 2023. First order of business tonight is to call order, call the meeting to order. I will do a roll call. Susan Ainsley.
Present.
Wolfgang Bulmer.
Here.
Carolyn Greenlaw.
Here.
Drew Riedel.
There.
And Monty Hardaway is present, too. So thank you all for coming out on this chilly evening, almost snowy. Our next order of business is to open the public comment period. I'll move that the public comment period be opened. Is there, we don't need a second. Is there anyone online who would like to speak? We have no one in chambers with us today. Hearing none and seeing none, I will move that we close the public comment period.
A second.
Thank you, Carolyn. Move and second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good deal. Next order of business tonight, sorry, this afternoon, my voice is trying to go, or this, in this evening, my, my voice is trying to go. I'll, I'll speak up, but it'll be problematic, is to, so the next order of business is to approve our minutes for both November 6th and November 16th of 2023. And I believe that we were all present for both meetings. So I will move that we approve both sets of draft minutes, November 6th and 16th, 2023.
Second.
Susan Ainsley seconds. Is there any discussion, comments? All those in favor of approving those draft minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. The, the next order of business is to set a public hearing for a proposed local law, see, 2023 sewer rents. Jody provided an excellent summary, so I'm going to read that off just for our recording tonight. Since Bolton Point and Kioga Heights have both increased their rates, it is necessary to amend our sewer law. Bolton Point has increased water rates starting January 2024 from $6.03 to $6.33 per 1,000 gallons of water consumption. Since the village sewer rate is based on 25%, 25% of that rate, the village portion of the sewer rate will need to be increased from $1.51 to $1.58 per 1,000 gallons of water consumption. Also, Kioga Heights has increased their rate from $6 to $6.96 per 1,000 gallons of water consumption by their Village of Kioga Heights Local Law 6-2023. This makes the total sewer rate $8.54 per 1,000 gallons of water consumption. And the minimum is still based on 5,000 gallons or $42.70. This increase will start January 1st of 2024, so village residents will see that increase on their April 2024 bill. Would someone like to move the, the public hearing, which would be for?
December 18th at 7:35.
That's our next Monday meeting, December 18th.
I so moved.
Thank you, Susan.
Second.
Drew seconds. All those in favor, we will set that, we will set that public hearing at 7:35 for that evening. Any other comments?
Just have a quick question. This is, it's a point of confusion for me to some extent. If you're not hooked up to the sewer line, the way it's kind of written, it's just water consumption sewer rents. You don't pay, right? If you're, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
It's a question.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? In favor of setting the public hearing for December 18th at 7:35 PM, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next order of business is the, to approve the revised letter of commitment that we had, we had drafted a couple of meetings ago. There probably is no need to approve it, but since we're, we're committing the village to spend the $5,000 action grant from NiSerta, I figured it was a good idea that we at least agree to what we're going to spend it on. Thanks to the input from Jody and Natalie and you, obviously, we have some, we have kind of a broad spectrum of potential future projects. And I, I put all of the rewarding in to give us a little bit more flex, flexibility. So I just wanted to, to get your approval. So we need someone to move and second that, please. Any, are there any other comments about the new letter? All right, no other comments. All those in favor of accepting the letter, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I will submit that letter along with a very, a very brief application. Basically just says, it's a very simple, non-competitive action grant. And I will be submitting both of those articles tomorrow into the Clean Energy Communities website. So once that's done, given a few weeks, we will get the $5,000 from CEC and NiSerta. Okay. So for Mayor's comments tonight, I think probably I should, we should start with Drew.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Sure, sure. I just wanted to, well, I know I spoke to you at different points, but I want to just formally announce that I won't be running for reelection in the spring. Largely personal choices, and I think it'd be best for the voters to have somebody who's fully committed for the two-year period. So I wanted to announce it now. We have enough time to hopefully find a, I'm sure you will find a great candidate next spring. And, but just reiterate that, I mean, continue as hard as ever did, you know, to, through April, April. So I also want to appreciate having the opportunity to serve the village with your, thank you.
I, I definitely appreciate all the work you've put in this past year. A lot to the village. So thank you very much. I'm sorry that you're going to leave, but I understand. Families are important parts of our lives and you need to, you need to set your priorities straight, and I think that a family is, too. So thanks, thanks for all your work. And if you know of anyone, you can recommend someone to us as a potential candidate. Please feel for, read it for their name onto us.
Absolutely will, yeah. Sounds great.
Sorry to hear it, but.
Thank you. Thank for the kind words. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Also, Brian Krydrosi, I think you probably are all aware, he is, he will be resigning his position as our fire inspector, pretty much for a very similar reason. He wants to spend time with his family. I think that that's, these are good things to do for, for individuals. So Mike Scott and Brian are meeting. They've had, they had one meeting last Thursday, and they will continue to meet. Brian is explaining to Mike how he documents inspections and plans for inspections, future inspections. And Mike is looking to see if he can take on the additional responsibility of fire inspections at this time. It's, it's not a sophisticated system, but it's a logical system that Brian has been using for a long time. And Mike is evaluating that to see if he can transition it into what he would need to do to carry on fire inspection.
Wait a second. So Mike already works a full-time job?
Right.
And is?
So there are times that you're down. I guess Brian is very organized, has everything really set up as far as, there are times when you're slow and there's times when you're busy. So the inspections are something that you could schedule during the slower times.
Okay.
And, you know, if he finds out that he can't do it, then, you know, we'll have to get somebody else.
And would this be a, would he hold two positions with two salaries?
It's all the same. No.
It will be.
It's all the same.
Part of.
This feels like.
Code enforcement.
Okay.
The, I've expressed my concern to Mike, and I've let him know that the moment he feels that he cannot do that, be it during this evaluation period or after he assumes the responsibilities, to let us know. I, I don't want Mike to burn out. And I, I've let him know that it's, it's good of him to do this, but if we need to hire someone else to let us know quickly, because we will start the search to find a replacement. And I was going to recommend to the trustees, at that point when we do that, that we find a person that could support Mike, and Mike could support them, and we have a, not really a succession plan, but backups for times when Mike is not here. It may mean that the person that you hired would have to be certified for code inspection or.
We only have certain titles that we can hire under. So you have to make sure that, that he would be under one of those.
It would be under one of those, but they would have cross-responsibility.
I mean, if he wants to look into taking it on, then that sounds absolutely reasonable, and then we'll just keep an eye on it.
Gives, and it gives us some flexibility that if we have to look for someone, and I've, I've aware that most people that are looking to fill roles like this or positions are having a very hard time finding people. So it would give us some flexibility, more time to interview people and pick the right candidate if we come to.
Okay.
So anyway, Mike is, is still evaluating, and he will let us know. I've let Mike know that if the, if the system that Brian has set up doesn't work for Mike to, to speak with me, because I, from software side, I can do, I can do systems evaluations, and we can look at some, making something that works for him.
Gotcha.
But it sounds like it would not be hard for, to.
How many hours was Brian working in the village?
It varies.
Between eight and 16, a week, pay period.
Yeah. It's not a lot.
Four to eight.
Yeah, so it's possible.
It's an important role, but it's not very demanding. There, I think there are times, it's like during the construction window during the year. There are certain times of the year where it's a lot more, a lot busier. With fire inspection, though, it's, can kind of happen anytime, kind of inspect inside buildings. So there are probably certain periods where it's a little busier than others, but not terribly. But that's what Mike, that's what Mike is evaluating. So he'll let us know what he thinks. He wanted a little more time to, to, to go through it and then report to us and let us know yes or no, or what we should do. But right now, it looks like it's possible. And that's good for the village. I just want to make sure it's also good for Mike.
So is there a job description separate from?
There's a fire inspector, yes, it's so. But his, Mike's position right now is code zoning and fire.
Fire, okay.
Right.
So it's his responsibility.
Okay.
Right. And Brian was like.
An extra.
An extra focused on.
That makes sense.
It's fairly common for most villages to have that in one role. It sounds like it would be.
Smaller.
Yeah, smaller villages, I would think it is. We've been very fortunate to have Brian as a separate inspector. And he's done a wonderful job, and I hate to see him go, but, just like you.
But didn't, did something change with?
Yeah, the assembly areas, mandate from the state made the job a lot more inspections that have to happen. If it wasn't for that, it'd been easy for him to take over.
Yeah, and that's, that's my concern.
Yes. And, and Mike is aware of that. He's right in the middle of that, and Brian has been helping him. So that's why I was specifically told, Mike, to let us know as soon as he was overwhelmed, or he would be.
Because Mike's doing that extra surveying all the.
Storm waters.
Storm water. And that's like a.
Yeah, but that's a one-time, you know, setting it up.
But, but in terms of, there's always going to be something Mike is going to have to do, probably.
Or extra.
I mean, extra, something. Well, anyway, we'll just see how it goes.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes. So, so if you have concerns, or, I mean, bring, you can bring them up now or bring them up later. That's, that's fine. I, I do have concerns. I don't want Mike to, to be overwhelmed. And he's aware of that, and I've said it as many times in ways as I possibly can, that, to let us know. So he's, he's evaluating it, and he will let us know for sure. He was going to try to join tonight, but I told him he didn't really need to be here. Okay, Jody passed me, I, I sent you an email from Guillermo Metz about the Clean Energy Banner. There is a code that we can't have banners in the village. Mike, I think Mike is double-checking that. And once you said that, Jody. This code.
Natalie, the way I read this is that the, that it really refers to things that are similar moving, fluttering, revolving devices. I mean, I think that a banner, they're thinking of something like, you know, like the banner man from, you know, it's like on a pole and there's a banner.
We think a banner because it inherently is only probably connected.
But what if you connect it on both sides? I'm feeling like this.
Two sides, I think it would still be black and a midly. If it was connected on all four sides, I think that would be different.
So we had a non-flapping signage. Why don't we just find a way to have it on?
Because he has shut down a lot of different banners. And if all of a sudden the village puts one up.
Yeah.
We are setting ourselves up for.
This is a very typical language, too.
Okay.
For other villagers.
So it would really be helpful for the residents to get information on that, and actually, it'd serve a really good purpose. Is there, and, I mean, is this something that would be impossible for us to make an exception for?
Exceptions are true.
Nothing in this code that allows.
Not, not make an exception, but even pass a law.
Yeah, we could pass a law.
Right.
But not, it would take a lot of, lot of work.
Yeah, you've got, yeah.
Just wondering if there's a connected, is a connected. What are those things called when you have like an election or just an event, and they're just like the two vote, the metal spokes?
Yeah, yard sign.
That's what it is. Yard sign.
Right, right, right. But that's, it's so small that people are just going to drive right by it. What I was going to recommend, and thank you, Jody, thank you for bringing this up, was that, that I can make a, a pop-up on our website that has the very same image, and has the volleyball. And then people go to our website homepage, it pops up for a few seconds, and they can either explore it, or they can let it go away.
That's, I mean, that certainly is a good solution.
And that, that way, we're passing along the, the graphic and the information. We just not, we don't have a sign, a physical sign outside.
I would do that and the yard sign. If yard signs are, yard signs are allowed for 30 days, right? I feel like I remember that from something.
They're so small.
Yeah, but it's only 30 days.
Underwood.
Yeah, with the snow, they're gonna.
DPW isn't going to like this very much.
So I was going to propose the, the online thing.
Yeah, I think it's great.
And let Guillermo know that, that we can't, and he, he might have a suggestion for some other way of passing along the information.
Or temporary sign may not be placed, okay.
Yeah, I, I looked through the code. I couldn't find an exception for it. So, and that's fine. That's what our code is for. So we'll find a way to get the information out. So I, I appreciate Jody telling me. I had just, was never aware of a banner, a ban on banners, but not a ban on banners.
I just know Mike had taken a lot of signs down, and I went and asked him, he goes, yep, nope, you're not going to do that in the village. I'm like, okay.
Okay.
Get the code.
And if we, if we open up that, if we set that precedent, Mike's going to be real busy taking banners, and we don't want to do that. So my last thing tonight is to remind us that lunch at our next Thursday meeting, the.
Yeah, that's right.
Trustees.
Hot luck.
Hot luck. Jody's going to bring lasagna. Deborah and I found a good recipe for roasted Italian vegetables. We're going to bring that. So desserts.
I'll bring cookies. I told Jody I would bring chocolate chip.
Bring desserts.
Chocolate chip cookies.
Whatever, whatever you could, whatever you want to bring.
Yes. And. I got your dessert.
If you invite, if you want to come.
Oh, I wasn't invited last year. Maybe I'll bring the bacon.
Oh, that would be fun.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have a.
I can eat a couple.
I love that idea personally.
We used to, for all of our new meetings, we used to always take turns, the trustees, one would bring a lunch.
Yep.
Oh, we'd take turns.
Like Paffin.
We can stop doing that. So we could talk, if we want to restart something like that, next year, we can do it again. We would just rotate through the trustees, and their, our trustee is responsible for our lunch. We can, we can set it up again. COVID was problematic. We just, we just stopped doing it. I think that's all I have for this evening. We'll go wrap this table. Okay.
I looked at this banner without knowing that it's not allowed, even on the website. I would suggest that we talk to these guys to improve the whole thing. Because as it looks right now, it doesn't serve the purpose, in my opinion.
Okay.
Because if you mention goal, you should at least specify what the goal is, first of all. Then you should specify a timing for your goal. Then you should specify how to get there. Then the position of your ball, things like that.
Yeah.
That all has to be on the banner, otherwise it's just useless.
Can you email that to him? Can you email that to him?
I could.
That's fine.
I could, but this, this banner is just useless, honestly. As it's designed right now, it's useless.
Yeah. No one's, no one's going to notice that the ball's moved until it's in the goal. They might notice.
Even if, if you don't know the goal, if you don't know when, when you want to reach the goal and things like that, that's the one, one-on-one to set goals, yeah.
Try to email on tonight or tomorrow, because they're going to go to press pretty soon, and it could be that he needs to rethink that. I noticed it, too, because it's like the ball doesn't designate, you know, like a blood drive or something would show how many, you know, quarts or gallons of blood you, you've got, so, yeah.
No, goal is a goal, but it's goal, so.
Yeah.
You couldn't, it would be probably a little bit more.
No defender, it's going to go in.
Especially the heat pumps, anyway, it should be a little bit more specific.
How many we're trying to shoot.
That's a complex thing as well.
And, and that banner is actually for the town of Lansing, including us. So it's not just our village, but it's the town, too. So it's, it's all of the non-pipelines, alternative area and within Lansing. So, so this, that email, and anything else?
An assault issue.
Assault.
Just discussed, I think we should actually really use a little less salt than we do.
You said you've spoken with John about the salt, right?
I have briefly, but not really in detail, and not examples, but now I have real examples since last Tuesday. Tuesday morning, it was actually really not pleasant out there, honestly, if you're a little bit environmentally conscious.
Right. Anything else?
No.
Susan?
Planning Board met. It looks like here's property is, a couple of things, engineering-wise, they have to sort out, otherwise, that's a go. Getzmann, Lansing Meadows, couple of sticky, sticky points that with regard to landscaping and just clearing up the site. Couple deadlines they've got to meet. Signage for one-way or so. It's the one-way.
Sign and.
One-way sign, yeah.
Word placement.
Yeah.
Just the way that's.
Yeah, so there was discussion about the plantings and all of that. But, so, looks like if he comes forward with meeting the, the extra conditions that should have probably been met prior to, he will be granted a one-year extension. So that was very generous, to quote Wolfgang, in my opinion, of, of the planning board. And the Solar Ray law is coming to the trustees in January. Fingers. Hallelujah. Fingers crossed. Don't say that. Just say it's coming to us in January. Well, I'm positive, and they've really been working hard, you know, with language and just making certain it's the way it needs to be.
Do it right the first time. So, no, that's good. Glad to hear that.
So that's all for our planning board.
That brings up, I did have a, one question, Jody, on the monthly statement you sent us. There was a $1,960 expense, I think, for beer escrow.
So what happens is anytime there's, they have an escrow. Your assets are owned, and it's a savings account. Anytime you write a check for legal or engineering, whatever that relates to that, that we've had to pay for, it comes out of the trust and agency fund.
Okay.
So I have to transfer money from the beers into the trust and agency fund to cover those checks.
Thank you.
Rather, because, you know, not going to set up another checking account just for him.
No, okay.
So it goes to your trust and agency.
Thank you. All right, Drew.
Not much to report. You were, you and I were on the T-COM call regarding the community choice aggregation that Rod Howe, the town of Ithaca, was leading that call.
Yeah.
And it still sounds like the community choice aggregation bill is being held up.
Yes.
Bill, but the implementation is being held up by the state government.
Really? Why?
They need to approve the administrator. So I don't know.
Oh, they.
Exactly what the holdup is. It just happened, they haven't gotten back to them yet. So I don't think there's any issue necessarily. It's just moving slowly, as far as I know.
Bureaucratic mess.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of where that sits at the moment.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think, I think it was interesting kind of doing the round robin.
Yeah.
Some of the other towns and hearing about some of the, the other things being implemented, even at small scale, like composting and community composting and things like that. Yeah, I think that was the, that was a big ticket item, so to speak, for that call.
Right.
It did seem like everyone was enthused about it, listening to different villages and communities being enthused about doing it, so.
Yeah, yeah, it seemed like that, and everyone had different.
The CCA doing composting.
Yeah, both. Doing community, community choice aggregation.
Right, yeah. I, I think people are interested, but we're trying to wait to see really how the, the logistics of all of it works out, how, what the state will allow, what they won't allow.
For the second, more complicated part of it in particular, yeah.
Yes, yeah. So once that's in place and it's actually working, we can look at whether it's something we wanted to pursue. So, but at this point, it's a waste of time, because we don't, we don't know what the state's going to allow or require or anything at this moment. So it's, it's proceeding.
Chosen approved administrator.
Yeah, from what I understand, this person has worked with the state government, so I don't know if that's really the issue.
Yeah, I, I don't know either. I haven't, I've just kind of stayed out of it, because that's why I want the city and the town of Ithaca to work out everything and tell us, rather than try to insert one, how I think they should solve it.
Yeah, I think the administrator worked closely with Albany on even drafting some of the laws for community choice aggregation.
But there already are approved administrators, so they just sort of chosen one, but, okay.
Yeah, it's.
I don't know if it's because of the other complicating, you know, the CCA plus where they have the.
Yeah, probably. I bet that's what.
Administrator.
I actually bet, I actually bet that's what's happening.
That might be the holdup.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That, that administrator is the best implement the dual plan.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm kind of, we're kind of expecting, so.
Yeah, we are. But once, but once a decision is made, there will be more clarification. And then the town, the city will start implementing, and we can see how that goes. And potentially down the road, tap into it for our village, if we think it's viable and can save us money, save our residents money, so. But thank you, Drew, for saying, for keeping into it, because you've had experience and you know kind of what to look for, and I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, and just kind of, we're lucky that we can piggyback, so that's good.
Yeah, very fortunate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, we won't be the only, we won't be the only municipality doing that. So we'll all, it'll be like a, a good group of potential users of, of CCA, so we can all share best practices and lessons learned, too, which is good. Having locally, rather than having to contact someone in another county or another, or the state or federal government. That's, that's always a slow process, but if you can call it a local municipality and say, we're having this problem, if you solve that, and it will be good down the road. So it's, it's a good thing to see how it works out. Anything else, Drew?
Tiffany.
Carolyn?
So with regards to the Lansing Trails Project, I shared Natalie, well, the letter I wrote, and that.
with regards to the Lansing Trails project, I shared Natalie, well, the letter I wrote, and that Natalie had given us some thoughts to with the committee, and they had an interesting comment, Natalie, that you might be interested in. So we had the bit about how will this impact my property value, and I just quickly Googled, and almost all the studies showed an increase in property value, and they have a research assistant in the town. So I had suggested to the group that somebody really actually do a nice research project on this, and create some kind of document for them, for their whole project, that's got citations, and, you know, whatever. And so they liked that idea, but I didn't want to hold my letter up for this, because they're using like a research assistant. I find these things take forever, and the work product is meh. And so I was like, well, I'm just going to send a letter anyway, but then, they, with regards to the liability section, Natalie had written, the recreational use statute provides protection from liability. Nothing can prevent a suit from being brought against, a land over, even if it turns out to be groundless. Fortunately, homeowners insurance usually provides coverage if the owner, to the owner if someone is injured on the property, blah, blah, blah. I encourage you to speak to your own legal counsel. So that's what Natalie had written, and they, one of the guys at the committee said, well, when we did so-and-so trail deal, didn't the town decide that we were going to cover liability for that easement? Yeah. And they all said, oh, yeah, we did that for this other one, and then he was like, well, why can't we do that for this one? And they were all like, great, and then it turned out when they had asked, now, the, this particular trail that they had done it on previously was fairly small, and when they asked their insurance carrier, well, how much would it be to indemnify the homeowner for this easement? Insurance company said, um, nothing, we'll just add it. So then they were like, okay, then we'll definitely do it, it's cost zero dollars. Now, it might be that when they go back for this project, it's not zero dollars. But either way, the, the committee, which is not the board, although the, some people overlap, they were in favor of indemnifying homeowners, because they just thought that that's just one more thing that is going to give people pause, and if we can just get, if we can reasonably have an indemnification, that would be all better. So that is, then I said, I don't want to send my letter out now, because if you're going to pass that as a town board, or look into that as a town board, I'm going to wait for that. So I decided, that's a good point, I'm going to wait for that, so that's where the letter is right now. They're going to figure out if they want to take on the indemnification, they're talking to their insurance company, and then they're discussing it as a board.
Do you know about how long they, they anticipate that will take to get that information?
That one quicker than waiting for, like, someone to do research. So they were going to talk about it at their next meeting, Ruth was going to call the insurance company when, when they left. She was the one who had spoken to them about that previous, smaller easement, costing nothing.
Okay.
And so, but this is much bigger, I can't imagine it's going to cost nothing, but it might. And if it costs nothing, then they're definitely going to indemnify.
Yeah.
So I said, great, let me, let me wait, you guys find out what we can do, and then we can maybe change and take out that language.
That's, that's great, well, that's, that's a lot of progress, a little bit of time.
So.
Good deal.
That's my report.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone? I cannot think of anything else that I need to talk about tonight, so need a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I second.
Carolyn, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a safe drive home.